Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and call the Warrant Board of Alderman meeting for September 4, 2018, in session. And if you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next would be the consent agenda items.
We have the regular meeting minutes from August 22, 2018, and the printing of the city forms bid awarded to American Solutions for Business in the amount of $4,086.66, the low bid.
Any questions about those items? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Show move.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Schell Harvey, signed by Alderman Costello. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes. Motion passed six-zero. Next would be the introduction of new employees.
The first one we have tonight is Kelly Carpenter. She is our new Director of Cleaning and Development and started on August 27 with us.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And next we have Ryan Carey is our new Building Inspector, also started on the 27.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So you got a full crew?
Still need one more.
Need one more.
We're still working on it.
We'll get there, little by little, right?
Yes, we will.
And I'd like to introduce Pierce Crager. He's the gentleman who's our Police Academy recruit.
Excellent.
Welcome aboard. Next, we'll open up the hearing for the public. If you have something you'd like to state, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes to speak about the business you'd like to speak about. Not senior, move on. Board of Alderman comments.
Mayor, I'd just like to comment. We, as we start our new fiscal year, I know that we heard that there's a new President of the Greater Warren County Economic Development Council. I'd like to place back on the agenda. We have budgeted $12,000, I believe, to that effort, subject to the EDC agreeing to an audit, and so I'd like to revisit that. Probably would be in order to have the city administrator contact the new President of the EDC, which I think is Peggy Rogers, I believe.
Yes, it's Peggy.
I feel aware of the funds are available.
If we can see if they maybe make the next meeting and put it on the agenda for the next meeting. If they do, right?
I can do that.
Thank you.
To the next meeting? Yes. Great.
Anyone else? Next would be the mayor's comments. Honestly, I'm going to keep it short and sweet and just say, I'm going to pass on that one and go do the approval of the following caterer liquor license for Fall Festival in 2018, because that is coming up quick and I'm pretty excited and got a lot of questions about those. So let's do the business at hand on that. I believe Ron's Family Restaurant is currently asking for approval for a caterer's liquor license, and the Downtown Pub and Grill.
May I ask if this has to be done separately or can we do them together?
We can do them together.
We can do them together?
Yes.
That was my question.
In fact, if you want me to go ahead and...
I'll make a motion that we approve the catering liquor licenses for the Fall Fest for Ron's Family Restaurant and Downtown Pub and Grill.
Show moved.
Motion made by...
For second.
Motion made by Alderman Schell Harvey, signed by Alderman Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes. Motion passes six-zero. Next, we'll hear from City Administrator Terry Thorne.
Thank you, Mayor. My first item this evening is a request for approval of replacement of the existing video equipment. Brandy has been working with our IT person and they have come up with a proposal that replaces all of our currently outdated video equipment. We have a lot of complaints, not only about the audio, but about the quality of the video. A lot of that is because our equipment is outdated and old. In fact, there's not a business that supports the current equipment that we have, so if there's a problem, we really, it's just hit and miss trying to fix it. This new equipment that they have proposed actually provides for everything to be in HD quality video. It creates a system that does not require an operator. John Marino is going to be with us through the end of this month, but after that, he'll be leaving us. The equipment is driven by sound through the microphones, which changes the cameras. The beauty of that is if there's a meeting that gets called suddenly, we have the ability to record any meeting that we would choose in this room without having to try to find an operator to handle the equipment. It's basically the push of a button activates it, and then everything else from there is automated. It provides all of both the sound and the video equipment to be replaced. All the microphones and everything in here would be run through the new system. So the total cost for all of that, though, is in excess of our current budget of $23,300. Total is about $40,000 for all the new equipment, so the deficit would be $16,700, which I would ask you for approval to take that from the unbudgeted line of our budget in the General Fund.
I have two questions. What kind of delivery time, subject to approval, would it warrant getting the equipment, getting it installed?
I believe that it's, Melody, you remember that? Wasn't it like 46 weeks before then you'd be able to get everything set up?
What was the time?
About 46 weeks.
And my second question is that there'll be a guarantee that this equipment will make you all of them look better and smarter?
Well, that was my comment, too, because some of us, no matter how quality, we're just not going to look any better. That's the bottom line.
And I have to say, one of my duties is protecting the employees from making comments that they may regret later, so...
Here is one thing that prior to your approval of this, I would say, and Brandy keeps telling me this, the cameras will be microphone-driven. So if you have a side conversation, you're probably going to get caught on camera with the side conversation, because it'll split the screen. If there's two people talking, then...
So you've answered the question. It'll make us look better, but not smarter. There you go.
I tried to. I tried to.
Are we going to have...
Wait till you...
Buttons? No, we have buttons on our speakers, so we can turn it off?
I do not believe so.
Like on the current system?
No, I think it's exactly, so you can't turn it off.
So you can't just hold your finger? Like here, we can hold our finger down.
We can't mute?
I don't believe you will have that capability.
Oh, gee.
We'll have to go back to passing notes.
Brandy said it's possible it can be perhaps added.
For a nominal fee, correct?
Yeah, and everything's...
So we'll have to make another amendment.
I think we're already paying a nominal fee.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the deficit amount of $16,700 for the inappropriate funds for video equipment bid.
Show moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Deloitte, I'm sorry, second one. Alderman Miller. Roll call vote.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes. Motion passed six-zero.
Thank you. My next item is a request for approval to disburse the $9,600 in matching funds for the Missouri Main Street Downtown Grant. They have received approval of the grant. They have the agreement that they are in the process of signing, and then this check needs to accompany that agreement back to Missouri Main Street.
Make a motion to approve that check for $9,600 to Missouri Main Street Grant Matching Funds.
Motion for floor from Schultz. Signed by Alderman Miller. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes. Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. The next item I have is a result of a question that came up at the last meeting. We were talking about the Jordan's Place Group and had the discussion about the necessity to have a committee, if you will, of local groups and individuals that would sort of address the needs of the youth in the community. So Brandy and I talked about it and decided that perhaps our school resource officers would be the right people to kind of spearhead that, since they're familiar with the school and with a lot of the kids that would be involved. So in talking with the lieutenant, we discovered that there already exists a committee that has been established for many months. It's called Bridging the Gap, and it was established, started with the school, apparently, and has been meeting and includes those individuals, as well as some others, that we had not talked about at the last meeting. So we don't feel that starting yet another committee with the same purpose as what is already out there with those members was really the right direction that we would need to go. We did talk with both the chief and lieutenant, though, about are there other things that perhaps the city could do that would provide assistance or would otherwise help with those particular youth? And so our lieutenant is working on some ideas and recommendations, some pretty out-of-the-box ideas, I have to admit, and we'll be putting a presentation together for you early in October. So I asked him to put all those thoughts together and then put it in presentation format, and it seems he needs to do some presentations for his college degree that he's working on, so this will be one of those presentations to you with his ideas on additional things outside of this group that perhaps we could do, which would be helpful with those youth in the community. So that will be forthcoming. Next, we need to discuss the placement of downtown signs in your Dropbox file. You have maps off the GIS of the two locations that we had talked about. This one being the corner of Boonslick and Highway 47, one of those locations we previously had talked about for one of our sort of directional signs with arrows, if you will, for the downtown historic district. Alderman Miller has obtained approval from Mr. Baker for placement of the sign there on Mr. Baker's lot on the northwest corner. In speaking with others, it was felt that perhaps that's not the best location. There might be visibility issues because of the number of signs that sometimes are located on that particular corner. So prior to staff actually going and installing those signs, we wanted feedback to make sure that wherever we are installing it is the desired location, that you all feel like will get the most visibility. And keep in mind that Mr. Baker is not providing a permanent easement, so he'll allow us to place the sign, but if that lot ends up purchased and there's a new owner, then we would have to deal with a new owner, perhaps, to continue that sign placement. So I put an X on the corner. I don't know, Alderman Miller, if that was the spot you had in mind, but at least it's close. It's on the corner there somewhere. So we'd like to know what your thoughts are on this particular location.
You talking about the southwest corner there?
No, the northwest corner.
At the intersection. Oh, on Baker's?
Yes.
Okay. Well, yeah. Who owns the southwest corner there? That's Don Ellis.
Don Ellis Smith.
Oh, okay. And I think that, I think that request had been made more than once.
At some point, and I don't remember what it was for, the city had approached her and requested ability, but it might have been a banner. I don't remember if it was a permanent sign or a banner. On that location, it's been a number of years ago, so I don't know if at this point she would be more amenable to that. We certainly could ask for that ability, but there is no guarantee that she would be willing to allow us to do that at this point.
Well, I think it's certainly gracious of Mr. Baker to offer that location. I think the answer is, does it, even on a temporary basis, does it suit the needs that we have? Does it create the visibility that you're looking for? I don't know the answer to that, because I don't know exactly. Alderman Miller, are you aware of the exact spot?
There's no specific, specific spot that has been set for that. It's movable to wherever we get the best visual coming on Norton South 47. If the other side of Main Street is not available from this Mrs. Smith, I'm not sure where else we would have available.
Well, I think, don't get me wrong, I think Baker's Lot would be an excellent spot. I would just, you know, down the road if he gets rid of it. And then I also, it's usually, there's a lot of banners and other signs there that I don't know if it would, you know, if it would get lost in the...
There'd have to be a...
How large is that sign? Would it be?
Something two by three, or...
Two by three?
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
Close to that.
The other issue that I see on that northwest corner of the intersection, and I, it's really nobody's fault, but the design that happened when MODOT made that improvement is if you set where they show these vehicles stacked up, waiting to make that left turn, if four 18-wheelers go through there, three of them will be up on the curb and in that green space between the sidewalk and the, in the curb. I only say that simply because there's a lot of stuff there on that, a lot of infrastructure on that northwest corner. But having said that, if that's, if that's the only location we have, then I think it's probably better than, better than not having the...
Yeah, which...
I think, I think we probably should move forward with it.
Would you like for us to contact Ms. Smith and just ask the question?
Real quick, though, Brad, you've...
Where the X is at, though, you gotta remember, MODOT owns all that, where that little gravel's out in the back, that's Mr. Baker's Lot. If you go, there's a curb that runs all the way down there, across that, where those, where you're talking about those light, the box for the lights. We ran into that before, when we had our banners out there across that. They, MODOT stopped and said, "No, you are behind this curb. This curb belongs to us." So that's what we cut for MODOT, and that's the only reason I know that, that that all belongs to MODOT.
So we might have to be significantly north of where Terry has marked that.
Yeah, you're going to be about, where most of those banners are at, the big banners, that, those are some of our old posts that were there. That's what we use. So, yeah, there's...
So are you saying, Brad, behind that light spot?
Uh, yeah, there's kind of like...
Is where you're talking about?
Alderman Schultz, use your 50 laser.
Yeah, you can see that little, there's a little curb that MODOT put in.
Is that the curb?
Yeah, it runs, it starts about here, it comes down here, and then it comes down. So this, this is the gravel area behind it. Most of those big banners that, when we put them in, we had to be behind there. There's a little short curb. It runs down here, it runs about halfway down, down here, and MODOT said that belongs to them.
So we'd have to be behind that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would think, because I wouldn't think they would let us put it on there.
Well, how, Brad, while you're up there, how far...
On Don Ellis?
No, on Baker's. How far north would you suggest we go?
Well, I'm saying, this is the end of, I mean, that would be the closest spot that you could start.
Okay.
And I think there's already a...
There's a banner there.
The, in there, already a...
Highway sign.
MODOT sign that says, the arrows that point down Main Street. The ones, the ones that are out on the interstate, when we had those, there's one of those signs that says here.
What about the possibility of getting the same post as MODOT? I mean, they did let us build a north pass.
We can certainly ask. All they can say is no.
My thought would be to check with Ms. Smith. I think, I think that is the best location, because you're...
It's the most open, open spot.
Yeah, and then if, if that's still not available, I'd say, if you piggyback on the, definitely, all they can say is no.
That's right. It doesn't hurt to ask any of them.
So we want to put this on the agenda later on after we ask?
Yeah. Let us do some questioning of those other individuals, and then we'll bring it back on the next agenda with answers, and then you can make a decision. How about that?
I think it sounds great.
Okay. It's planned. That's really all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Right, next we'll hear from Director of Operations, Brandy Walters.
Good evening. I, the first thing that I have is the monthly marketing and business support report for the month of August. And I've done some contacts with some local businesses, established businesses, and we're just going to still try to get a lot of those contacted and sit down and talk to them. We did have the ribbon cutting for Dollar General in August, and then we have one coming up in September. On September 29, Farmers Insurance will be doing the ribbon cutting, and they are located at the New Main Street Shops.
What day was that?
September 29. I didn't pull it to mind yet.
Any comments from any businesses with a renewed interest in coming to locate in Warranton since we've opened up the...
Nothing that I have heard of yet.
Okay.
No. I'm sure they'll be coming, though.
Yeah. Any other questions on the report?
The next thing that I have for you is the monthly admin report. And on there, as you can see, we've hired, we have four new hires this last month, which was great. It's slowly getting the positions filled. And we are currently working on the newsletter, so that should be going out here shortly. That'll be in the mailboxes before the Fall Festival.
Any questions? Comments?
See, we got 55 new Facebook page likes.
Yeah. They're liking the social media. The last thing that I have for you is currently, we are, we are taking reservations, I guess you could say, for pre-sale of the Aquatic Center passes. So from September 1st through October 6th until the day that we have our ribbon cutting out there, you can purchase single full-year passes and get $15 off, or you can purchase a family full-year pass and get $30 off.
Well, since you brought that up, it kind of, this marks the, yesterday was the closing of the old pool, which, was it 30 years estimated, or 29, something like that?
1989.
So I think we need to remember that.
There's a few names on that plaque.
There are a few names on that plaque.
They're faded, kind of white.
So are the names. So are the people. I think the names are very shaped by people.
Don't ruin my joke.
What month does the fiscal year for the pool passes run to?
It is going to be running from whenever you purchase it.
Oh.
So if you purchase it, like right now, the pre-sale, the expiration date will be October 6th, 2019.
Okay.
So it goes from whenever you purchase it, it'll get for a year.
So will the pool be open at the ribbon, ribbon cutting, or is it a different day?
The pool will definitely be open at the ribbon cutting.
Actually, the outdoor pool looks like it goes swimming in right now. Looks really nice.
There's a rumor that an Alderman might have dipped in the outdoor pool this weekend.
Oh, me. I couldn't get over the fence. Once I got over, I couldn't figure out how to get back.
At our age, you crawl under the fence.
Yeah, well, that's, that's true. Might like the police have come and get me, or...
You have to set up.
Or Brad would... It's not really good trouble.
That was good.
That's it.
Anything else? Before we move on, I'm going to give a apology. I gave one off-camera last, yes, last meeting, but, Dana, I apologize for mispronouncing your name, your last name, last meeting. I said Pulaski, and I did not mean to do that. I apologize. I have no idea what got into me, but... Next, we hear from Finance Officer Dana Pulaska.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, and that's quite all right, Mayor, pretty common. Tonight, we present to you the accounts payable and utility refund claims. So claims totaling $963,605.67.
Make a motion, will you approve the AP claims of $963,605.76?
Do you second? Before we move into it, do we need approval on that one? On the accounts pa, or, sorry, yes. Motion made by Alderman Ock, signed by Alderman Miller. Roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Motion passes five to zero, and one, I'm standing.
In addition, this evening, I have the July financials. They are by fund, so again, first month of the fiscal year, so it's a, you know, a little bit hard to see any trends yet, and, you know, in some areas, the actual full expenditures haven't happened just yet. So in, at the end of July, for the General Fund, revenues were $66,000, higher than budgeted, operating expense about $181,000 below budget. And then after capital spending in the General Fund, July has an increase to the fund balance of $85,574. In the Water Sewer Fund, revenue's about $46,000 above budget, and that's for all the services, water, sewer, industrial. Expenses are about $63,000 below budget. So after capital spending in the Water Sewer Fund, the fund balance has been increased by about $176,740. Capital sales tax, again, it's seen a little increase in revenue in the sales tax area. There's been some capital projects that have been carried forward, so a little bit higher spending in that area right now. Again, no set trends just yet, and just being the first month of the year. So those are the highlights from the financials. Do anyone have any questions?
Well, I thought you were going to say the trend to having the sales tax 20% above budget was going to carry on through the rest of the year.
Yeah, I, hmm. We all know, we'd be afraid to say that just yet.
Just yet, huh?
Yeah.
I do like the new format of the reports, as you present them. It's easier to follow.
A little easier to understand, yeah.
I think so.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Grounds and Maintenance Director, Brad Buzikus.
Good evening. We have the utility bid for the, for them, for the siding stricker is, I'm recommending to accept their bid. They are a little bit higher, but after going down and inspecting both of these, we just didn't feel comfortable with the structural foam bed and it would just steal tubing on the one that we were, the low bid compared to the John Deere that was, we already...
compared to the John Deere that was, we already have two of these, so we know a little bit about them and and their wear and stuff has been real good for us, so I felt a little more comfortable with that. And I had 72,000, but, or 7,200 budgeted, so it's below my budget, so.
Any questions on that? I'll entertain a motion to award the utility vehicle bid to Sidon Stricker Implement in the amount of $5,995, the best bid.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Scholhary, signed by Alderman Costello, roll call vote please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Scholhary?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion passes six zero. All hands? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 50-18.
So moved.
I'm sorry, who?
Good luck.
I was wondering if we could do this whole thing without giving the lawyer a grief.
Well, considering I've taken grief from everybody in the room already.
We have a motion for Alderman Deloitte, do I hear a second?
Yes, second.
Signed by Alderman Ock.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with the Graville Law Firm LLC in the city of Warrenton, Missouri for legal services.
Now, before I ask for a second, is there anyone who'd like to oppose that or have questions in regards to this?
Philly buster it maybe?
Well, I don't think technically we can oppose it. We have to, well, we have to state it affirmatively and then vote the opposite.
I have a request, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Can we amend this agreement to require-
No.
Attorney Graville to buy razor and use it.
He must need the money, cause he can't afford a razor.
I'm blowing my beard for a cause.
I believe at one point we did require certain, or had certain requirements for a gentleman we were doing business with. So, I think we can add that if we need to, or even maybe make an ordinance.
As I told Alderman Ock, Terry will give me trouble, but when it's time, she will tell me to just shave it before I show up. So, I didn't get that as direct. It was maybe a little bit more aggressive commentary than I'm used to.
But even beyond that, you'll listen.
Should've accepted the big crack.
I shave it every time she tells me, don't show up without it.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 50-18.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Scholhary, signed by Alderman Costello.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with the Graville Law Firm LLC in the city of Warrenton, Missouri for legal services.
Roll call vote.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Scholhary?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Bill passes six to zero. We can make side comment later.
Yeah, thanks, Terry.
You shaved this morning, didn't you?
I did, actually. This is my five o'clock shadow. Usually I shave in the car on the way here.
Entertained a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Alderman meeting.
I said motion to adjourn before this was out.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Costello, signed by Alderman Scholhary, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are so adjourned.